I did talk to Ken, he is not going to be joining us tonight.
Okay.
We're still in Arizona.
Ah, ah, we had the discussion about.
And she's stuck on a plane.
Yeah. Everybody's good, I'm good. Yeah.
Nicole, are you going to control the mute tonight?
Um, yes.
Got it, thank you. What's caused the delay?
Sorry?
What, what, what caused the delay? Technical issues?
No, I was waiting for you to begin, mayor.
Oh, it was clear, we've all been muted and, oh, okay. That being said, I will call the meeting to order, Joint City Council Fire Protection District Board Meeting for October 20th, 2020.
Are we not supposed to have video because it says that the host has stopped our videos?
Oh, okay, hold on just one second. And, um, I apologize for the technical difficulties, I'm. Just bear with me one second. Okay, hold on. I apologize, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, you should be all allowed to start your videos now. There we go.
Very good.
Apologize for that.
Okay, the meeting has been called to orders, then I'll pledge allegiance, we have the flag, please.
Yes, we do, one moment, please. There we are.
All right, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Yes, council member Abadamos.
Here.
Council member Joseph.
Here.
Council member Leary is absent this evening, Mayor Oro.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here, thank you all. Report on closed session, report, confirmation of reportable action, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, fire chief, and as fire board members. You adjourned an open session at 5:31, and at that time you added two matters to the agenda. One, existing litigation, City of American Canyon versus GSM Landscape Architects, Napa County Superior Court Case Number 18CV001027. And the other, a fire district matter, a personnel matter concerning the classification and administration of the fire chief position under Government Code Section 54957, both those were done by unanimous votes, meaning four zero. Board member Leary and council member Leary being absent. You concluded your closed session at 6:27, and with respect to the three matters, being the two that I just mentioned, and the one conference with legal counsel concerning unanticipated or anticipated litigation. I will do a written report consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section 54957.1. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions? None? Thank you, Mr. Ross, we'll move on. For the clerk, a matter of communicating how this telecommunication participants engage.
Yes, thank you, mayor, thank you for joining us for the October 20th, 2020, City of American Canyon City Council meeting. This meeting is being held entirely virtually in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The format tonight will be similar to that of an in-person city council meeting. In addition to the Zoom platform, the meeting is being broadcast on cable TV Channel 28, on YouTube, and streamed on the city's website. You will see the city council members on your screen along with members of the city staff. All members of the public will participate in listen-only mode. Public comment is invited for non-agenda items during the public comment forum section of the meeting and on each agenda item. When you wish to speak on an item, please follow these steps to make your comment. When the mayor calls a particular item and you wish to speak on that item, click the raise hand button if joining by computer. If joining by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. When it is your turn, I will announce your name and invite you to speak. You may see a message saying the host would like you to unmute your microphone. If you get this message, click unmute myself to begin speaking. To unmute yourself by phone, dial star six and begin speaking. Video will not be turned on, only audio. You may have up to three minutes to make your comments to the city council. At the end of your three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments quickly, and I will mute your audio once you are done. I will be timing public comment. Please only press not, star nine to raise your hand for items that you wish to speak on, as the raised hand will be cleared at the end of each item. The agenda for this meeting is available on the city's website at www.cityofamericancanon.org. As a standard practice, community members are allowed to comment one time for each agenda item. All votes for tonight's meeting will be taken by roll call. We ask for your patience and understanding when there are technical difficulties. This concludes my introductory remarks.
Thank you. We'll move on now to city clerk announcement pursuant to Government Code 54952.3. It is as stated in the agenda. Moving on now to proclamations and presentations. It's a pleasure this evening to proclaim, proclaiming the month of October 2020 as Filipino-American months, history months. To it, hopefully we have a lot of folks at home who are able to join the meeting this evening via Zoom and because it's a proud moment for American Canyon as well. I'll read the proclamation, City of American Canyon proclamation, October 20 is Filipino-American history month. Whereas Filipino-Americans are one of the largest ethnic groups in the state of California and the state of American Canyon. And whereas the earliest documented evidence of Filipinos in the United States dates to October 18, 1587, when Filipino mariners on Spanish sailing vessels landed at Morro Bay, California. And whereas over the course of 433 years, Filipino-Americans have contributed greatly to the freedom, prosperity, and diversity, diverse culture of the United States. And whereas in 2009, the month of October was first recognized as Filipino-American history month in California to promote and reflect on Philippine history, culture. And whereas the Filipino-Americans of American Canyon, born in the Philippines and many other countries who speak multiple, multitude of languages, whose immigrant stories are as varied as the thousand islands which make up the Philippines, are all Filipino by virtue of their shared ancestry. And whereas American Canyon is a very diverse city, with all religions, ethnicities, and languages represented in the coexisting in a community that has a noteworthy history, noteworthy history of embracing its diverse nature, including the active engagement of Filipino-Americans and civic organizations in the appointment and election of Filipino-Americans to various city commissions and to the city council. And whereas it's important to educate our youth, including the use of our newest student wellness program, FLAG, F-L-A-G-G, the Filipino Life and Generation Group, on the lasting and significant contributions of Filipino-Americans, local governments, business, the medical and legal professions, education, religion, and everyday life. Now therefore be resolved, that I Leon Garcia, City of American Canyon, on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Filipino-American History Month in the City of American Canyon, and encourage all residents to learn more about the history and contributions of Filipino-Americans. And I see Clarence Balmoral has joined us, and it'd be great to present this to you, and I would assume if we were doing a live presentation, we'd have a huge crowd in American Canyon City Hall to receive this this evening. So anyway, my congratulations to all Filipino-Americans in American Canyon. And thank you for the contributions you bring to our city. Okay, we'll move on now to.
Mayor, I believe Clarence had a few comments he wanted to make.
Oh, yes, please.
Muted there Clarence.
I think he was respectfully waiting. And you are muted Clarence, we're not hearing you at all.
Can't hear you Clarence.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, welcome, good to have you here.
Okay, great, good to be here. Um, I also wanted to point out that one of the leaders of FLAG, our student wellness group, her name is Faith Balisteros, is also online and.
Welcome.
Not sure if her video is on.
Yes, she is.
We can see her.
There she is, great. But I will, I will, I would be happy to, to start and Faith will follow. So hi, I'm Clarence Memor, the Filipino community liaison for the Napa Valley Educational Foundation. And I, along with my colleague Roxana Plancorte, who serves as a counselor at ACHS, we're very proud to coordinate FLAG, which stands for the Filipino Life and Generations Group. So as Filipino-American residents of American Canyon, we're honored, very honored, to receive the proclamation of Filipino-American History Month from Mayor Garcia and our city council. Filipino-Americans are deeply integrated into the history of the United States, California, and our city. Public service is particularly important to us. Vice Mayor David Oro is the first Filipino-American elected to public office in Napa County, which is of great historical significance. Crystal Dispo Malari and I currently serve respectively on the City Planning Commission and the Parks and Community Services Commission. Filipino-Americans are prominent in the Lions Club, Kowani's, Seroptimist, and many other community groups, as seen in the volunteer service of Nelia Maderos, Eva Garcia, Dame Jose, and Cam Ganton, among others. So of course, we will continue to be active and make history in our wonderfully diverse city, and pass along the lessons of the, and pass along the lessons of the past to the younger generation. And one of those Filipino-American youth, Faith Balisteros, is a leader in FLAG and is also here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you.
Um, hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Faith Balisteros Jr. at ACHS. I would first like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to take part in this council meeting as a part of the Filipino youth and as a leader representative of the Filipino Life and Generations Group, or FLAG for short. We are very grateful to have the chance to celebrate our heritage for the month of October. I know of many Filipinos in ACHS alone who feel as if they are not connected to the Philippines, as they may only know a little about the country's culture and language. For decades, many Filipino-Americans have struggled with their identity, as there is some bias against Filipino-Americans by native Filipinos. However, letting us be acknowledged and to have the opportunity to learn more may not seem like a big deal to others. However, to many Filipino-Americans, having a month to celebrate us proves that our voices are heard and that we should be proud to be Filipino-Americans. In FLAG, we help each other and other Filipinos, regardless of age, to learn more about who we are and where we came from. Although I am native Filipino, I believe there are still so much things I could learn with the help of my Filipino peers and FLAG adult mentors. We hope that our organization, along with your help, will be able to help Filipino-Americans feel included in the community. Once again, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to celebrate being Filipino-American.
Well, happy to have you join us this evening, we certainly wish you was in person.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just really quickly, Faith, thank you Clarence, thank you. I am part of that FLAG group and I've been joining since Clarence started it. It's been around for a while, but this year with Clarence's leadership, it's really taken off. They've had single-digit numbers before and probably no meetings, and I think the last meeting we had 16 people on board.
Wow.
Which is a great group, and there's adults in there from the community. And for anybody who's watching this right now, I don't think it's too late to join. If you are of Filipino heritage and want to join the discussion, I'm learning a lot, that's for sure. So please reach out to Clarence or find us on social, there's plenty of postings about that on Nextdoor and on Facebook. So it's, it's a worthy group, and thank you again for your leadership Clarence, and Faith, thank you for being here.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing more about FLAG and maybe sharing the cultural knowledge of the Philippines with, with the community. There's a lot of, I know by interacting, we understand each other more, and we certainly value how so much we have in common between different cultures.
Mayor, I just want to give a quick shout out to Faith for being here with us tonight. It takes a lot of courage sometimes to come before a city council and give a little, little presentation like that. So Faith, if you're still listening to us, I think you did an amazing job, and thank you so much for being here. And Clarence, of course, thank you to you too.
Moving on in our agenda, we'll take up the proclamation proclaiming October 2020 as Fire Prevention Month. See, we have Chief Cahill with us. I'll read the proclamation, American Canyon Fire Protection District proclaiming the month of October 2020 as Fire Prevention Month. Whereas, the American Canyon Fire Protection District is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting the City of American Canyon. And whereas fire is serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are in the greatest risk from fire. And whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, American residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety. It should make home escape plan and practice with everyone in the household, including visitors. And whereas American Canyon residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 or the local emergency from a cell phone or the neighbor's phone. And whereas American Canyon residents should practice using different ways out. Residents in a real emergency should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly and should never go back inside the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas the 2020 Fire Protection Week theme, serve up fire safety in the kitchen, effectively serves how to remind us that cooking is the number one cause of home fires and, and home injuries. So now that, for that to be resolved, that I Leon Garcia, Chairman of the Board of Directors of the American Canyon Fire Protection District, hereby proclaim October 2020 as Fire Prevention Month throughout the City of American Canyon. And I urge all people of the American Canyon to practice safe cooking practices, be aware of their surroundings, serve up fire safety in the kitchen, and to support the many public safety activities. Thank you, Chief Cahill.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia and council. This is probably my 47th Fire Prevention Month proclamation, showing my age here a little bit. It's super important for us to make, to get that attention within the community towards fire prevention specifically. We've, you know, the focus on home fire safety is something that we can't, you know, we really need to show to our young children and to our, our, all ages within the home. It's a super important part of our job within the fire department to, to pass that on. So anyway, I just appreciate the fact that the council has, and you, mayor, have given us this proclamation, it's important to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, very good. Any comments? We haven't any comments on this? So, all right, our next proclamation. Proclamation recognizing efforts to ensure food stability during the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic. City of American Canyon proclamation, recognizing efforts to ensure food stability during the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the United States, the state of California, Napa County, and the City of American Canyon are significantly impacted by the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas responses to the pandemic include stay-at-home orders, the result of which include job losses and impacts to the economy. And whereas many Americans have suffered both with illness and the economic impacts that have followed, including Napa County and American Canyon. And whereas several community groups and agencies are providing. And whereas, several community groups and agencies are providing American Canyon residents with a wide range of service to those most greatly impacted to ensure food stability. And whereas, throughout the leadership of Napa County and its partner organizations, we need organizations active in disaster, communication coordination among food providers, referral organizations, food resource support organization, and resource facilitators have been key to encouraging food stability in American Canyon during these tough times. And whereas, the city council of the city of American Canyon recognizes and appreciates the efforts made by the following organizations. Community Action Napa Valley, that's the county food bank, American Canyon Kwanis Club, and American Canyon Emergency Food Battery. Napa Valley Community Organizations Active in Disaster. Innovative Health Solutions, American Canyon Boys, Napa Valley Unified School District, American Canyon Emergency Response Team, Ole Health, Carvis Female Baptist Church, Holy Family Baptist Church, Calabria Care, Parents Can, Crosswalk Church, Catholic Charities. And whereas, the holiday season is often tough times for those in need, with the traditional food drives in question or canceled, the Kwanis Club of American Canyon and American Canyon Emergency Food Battery, Boy Scouts, and City are partnering to host a drive through the community, well, Community-wide Food Drive on November fourteenth in the Phillips West Aquatic Center parking lot. And whereas, we encourage all those that have the means to donate to provide shelf-stable, non-perishable food items during the drive through, uh, to ensure that all those in need have food stability during the difficult holiday season. Now, therefore, be it resolved, then I, Mayor Leon Garcia, on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, urge all residents to join with city council in recognition of the efforts. Now, show appreciation to those who support the food distributions in American Canyon and participate in the food drive to help your fellow American Canyon residents. Very good. You know, it's, uh, quite significant. I'm, as a member of the CERT team, uh, we were doing, um, uh, traffic management at the Aquatic Center parking lot. Why they do a superior job with that. But I think this last, uh, uh, week when we had the, uh, the food distribution, it was, uh, two hundred and forty-eight cars. And that's a lot of families. And it's just, uh, it's significant that we have the, the support within our community and we can reach out to, uh, work with other agencies to make sure that our families are taken care of that way. So I look forward to the, the food drive and I know, uh, Mark Joseph and I, uh, Councilmember Joseph and I are just involved with Kwanis as well to ensure that we pick it up and we can distribute it and we have there for, for families in need. So, um, I look forward to, uh, encouraging the community to participate. Your, uh, your contribution is very valued out there and families certainly need it. Any other comments? No?
Yeah, I believe, uh, Park and Rec's Director Creighton Wright had a couple of comments he'd like to make.
Very good. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Mayor, just a, a quick note that, uh, as you know, some of our food, um, um, committee group members are out in YouTube and Facebook land, uh, watching here tonight. We invited them to, to watch there. So I wanted to thank all of them that are out. Um, I wanted to call out just some specific folks that I think have been instrumental during this time. I know it's been a different and new role for us and Park and Rec and some of our community organizations as well. And we're all learning through this pandemic. Um, first off, I wanted to thank our staff, Alana, Vince, and Stacy, who have been really the ones out in the field doing the hard work. Um, through, through COAD, Celeste Junta, Dar Valencia, and David Busby, who coordinate the food organization for the whole county. And then, specific food organizations, Shirley King with the Food Bank, Nan, Sandy, Shar, and Brian with Kwanis, uh, the Key Club, Powell Helms, and the rest of CERT members, Lupe Villasenor from, uh, Ole Health, uh, Patricia and Deacon Leach from our two churches in town, Tiffany Walker from Calabria, Shelley Lopez from Parents Can, and Rosa Maria Hammer from Catholic Charities. That has been our group as we've gone through this pandemic and have to figure out how to serve those in great need in American Canyon. That's our team that have worked through it on a, start off on a weekly basis than every other week since then. Uh, so just to reemphasize the last point in that proclamation, we are doing a drive-through food, um, drop-off for non-perishable items on Saturday, November fourteenth. We'll be pushing out more information here in the next couple of weeks. We need to get through Halloween first and then, uh, Jen and our communications team will put out more information about it. So please be looking out for that, November fourteenth. Without normal food drive opportunities available, this is going to be the one to, to stuff the shelves of our local American Canyon, um, Kwanis Emergency Food Battery. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you too for your staff and the support you've given us. Any other comment?
No other comment, Mayor.
All right, all right. Thank you. Uh, at this time, we, uh, and I think we have a number that came through, uh, email and probably maybe some folks on standby, on the phone.
We, so this would be the time for non-agendized public comment. Again, the, the timeframe is, three minutes is allowed for, for public comment. And this is for any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. Um, we do have one person who has raised their hand. They are a caller. When I unmute you, please identify yourself, as I only have your phone number. And I have asked you to unmute yourself, caller.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, this is, uh, Chris James, um, over on Wetland Side Road, um, City Redusident. Um, my comment is regarding, um, uh, an item from last month's agenda on the general plan update. Um, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I did watch it after. And, um, and I wish I'd known about the meeting ahead of time, because I would really have loved to give some feedback. But this is my first opportunity to actually address this in person, as I wasn't able to attend the last meeting as well. Um, and I understand that you can't, um, make a, any comments to me back right now, um, or to address my concerns. But, um, I'm on the Circulation, um, uh, Element Committee, along with about fifteen or twenty other people. There's another, probably forty people on the other two, um, commissions. Um, none of us were informed of that, um, update happening in the last meeting. Um, it was a little disappointing. I'm sure at least a few of us would have been there to actually give some input into it. Um, so it's a little dispen on that. Um, I was also a little disappointed in Brett's, um, oversimplification of what went on in those meetings. Um, it was a little rosy little picture that he painted and, and somebody was very positive, but there was a lot of, um, and I'm also in some of the meetings and in ours, um, there was a lot of feedback about, you know, traffic. It was circulation, right? And, um, I don't think he captured that when he was presenting that. So I would love to talk to you either one-on-one or at some other meeting, if we could reschedule it, to get, get our feedback on that. And I would encourage people, um, whoever's in charge of the mailing list to get, um, give everyone an update. We still haven't gotten an update on this. Um, and even though I had actually solicited, um, via email several times, the city on trying to get an update. I know it's, it's COVID and everything is, you know, difficult and everyone's trying their best, but it would really be nice to be able to participate in this or at least get an update from, from the public, uh, to the public on this. Um, and, you know, with regard to having the meetings online going forward, I think that's the only option. Um, but it's, it's going to be difficult and challenging for some people, I think. Um, so we need to be a little more patient and, um, and trying to capture the, the spirit of these people and what, what they really want to input into this. Um, because I think it's going to be hard to do online. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other speakers?
Yes, we have Cindy Beederman. Ms. Beederman, I have asked you to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Thank you. Good evening.
This is Cindy Beederman, American Canyon Long-Term Resident, and I'm speaking for Cindy Beederman, Long-Term American Canyon. I sent you guys all the email regarding my thoughts and everything else regarding the issue that I have concerns about. I'm gonna briefly touch upon some items.
Sorry, you're breaking up.
My...
Your signal's breaking up, sorry.
I better now.
Yes?
Okay. So basically, today I discovered that the California State Council on Development of Disabilities, the SCDD, are the providers gifters of the personal protective equipment, what we call PPEs, that some community members have been receiving as reported on Nextdoor and by personal information that I've received. These are the same items that Mayor Leon Garcia is handing out to selected residents in the mobile home park. Unfortunately, when he handed the items out, Leon failed to inform the recipients and our city residents. The PPE supplies were provided by the SCDD and not from Leon. More importantly, he failed to inform our community that SCDD is a valuable resource for all of our American Canyon residents, businesses, and nonprofit community-based organizations. I spoke with Ms. Lisa Hooks, who is the SCDD Area Manager. It was formed that all American Canyon residents, businesses, and nonprofit community-based organizations can contact her for the needed PPE items. Information about the SCDD program was to be included with the delivery of the PPEs, so the community would be informed where to attain them. Again, SCDD are their private providers, PPE. These are not gifts from the mayor and should not be used to facilitate election campaigns. There are some in the community who express they feel obligated to vote for Leon because he provided the PPE. I feel that the mayor is obligated to let the community know that this is not the case. It is disheartening that the city whose council relays the message "American Canyon loves everyone" is now negated by the actions of the mayor. The city's Code of Ethics states the mayor and council members are to be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety. He has been a mayor for fourteen years. His face is known in our city. So he, even if he's not asking for votes in the mobile home park that prohibits campaigning, it is common knowledge that the mayor is up for reelection and by giving much-needed items from the mayor, the perception is implied. By simply knocking on doors of selected homes as the mayor and providing the PPEs, yet omit homes that had been, that had his opponent's sign displayed in their yard, lies in the face of the city code of ethics of conduct, public interest, must be the principal duty of the individuals representing the city. Members are to be, work for the common good of the people of American Canyon and not for any private or personal interests, and they will assure fair and equal treatment of all persons. I am in receipt of a letter from an American Canyon resident who was neglected of PPEs in his manner. He is also caregiver for ninety-seven, for her ninety-seven-year-old mother. She was heartfelt in her feelings. She felt slighted by the mayor and feels it was done simply because she expressed support for her candidate choice. Sadly appears the mayor missed a valuable opportunity to help the entire community. Our neighboring cities have collaborated and utilized multiple community organizations to hold a community-wide event in efforts to get the PPEs out quickly.
Ms. Beederman, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Thank you. There are many American Canyon residents who perceive the mayor's self-serving interests overshadowed his duty to community in its entirety. I'm requesting that the City of American Canyon Council hold the mayor to be accountable for his conduct. And as you guys know, I've also provided you guys all with the contact information for SCDD, and I would love for everybody to put that information out to our community so they can partake in this very needed equipment for the virus. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, would you care to comment on? Any constraints I have with respect to that activity by community service?
I think the comment that I'd make is that, um, I have, uh, performed and reviewed information associated with this. Um, there's no city involvement that I've ascertained so far, but I've forwarded, uh, the concerns expressed to people in Department of General Services and would, and are, am in continuing to investigate the matter for, uh, appropriate governmental officials at the state level for, uh, review. Uh, there's no direct city involvement, so there isn't an issue with respect to, uh, city regulations presently based on the facts as they've been described to me or have been furnished to me. But the issue of, um, the appropriate state agency to review the procedures associated with the dissemination of the PPE is open and has been forwarded. I directed a communication summarizing those issues to all, uh, candidates before this meeting based on what I've learned, um, so far. I've also requested a reference from the Fair Political Practices Commission, who would deal with city violations as to a direct referral in the Department of General Services concerning the procedures that govern the distribution of this PPE. So, uh, the information's not done, it's not complete, but the inquiry into it is ongoing. Um, I'm limited in what I can do by the municipal code, but the facts that have been presented to me concerning conduct and disposition of the PPE is being reviewed and will, um, eventually get to the appropriate state official. So, it's ongoing. Uh, that would be my response to the inquiry raised.
Thank you. I'll just, in part of the, uh, um, Catholic, uh, Parents Can was the one contacting my wife when she started this PPE distribution back in March. Uh, and we have been continuing with this, uh, my sister-in-law program. And we received a large, significant contribution of PPE, uh, last Saturday. Uh, it is, uh, distributed to, uh, Father Fred Coota Baby, a Holy Family parish, and it is being distributed throughout the community. Uh, the distribution plan is, uh, coming together. Schools will receive, uh, sufficient supplies, local businesses will receive sufficient supplies, healthcare providers will receive, uh, the PPE and so forth. So, uh, I do not campaign as mayor when I am assisting my wife. I don't wear any thing that attaches me to a campaign. And I think we have managed to cover all units in the mobile home parks, uh, three thousand Broadway, two forty-four American Canyon Road, two sixty, that is not yet done, where else we have, twenty-five, twenty-five, uh, Bosn Road. Uh, if anybody's been listening, uh, please contact me and we will make sure you get some.
Okay, I would, uh, like to emphasize, Mr. Mayor, the matter's not agendized.
All right, thank you.
It's, uh, appropriate for me to comment because, um, information has been addressed to me, but other than that, um, I think that, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
... sufficient review of this matter under public comment.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other speakers?
No additional public comment at this time, Mayor.
Very good. Let's move on to our agendas. Any agenda changes for...
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I believe there was a couple of, uh, emails that were sent for additional public comment?
Correct. Those have been incorporated into the record. Those people have received messages from me in the clerk's office, letting them know that we have received their messages and they have been incorporated into the record.
That our practice has been to read them into the record? So should they not be read into the record?
No, our, we went, we reviewed that earlier. Our practice hasn't been actually to read them into the record. Our practice, and we actually confirmed that by looking back at the agenda. We are incorporating them, uh, into the record. And that's why, uh, in effect, someone can make a written comment, um, by email and then also make a called-in comment. Um, in some instances, uh, we have read them verbatim, but, um, our practice in general is to incorporate them, uh, into the record as a part of the packet that gets, um, assigned to the library.
So if they were to call in right now and they could read it for the record?
They could call in, yeah, anytime during public comment and make whatever comments they were wanting to make.
And I think, um, a couple of the emails did say, please read into the record. Um, I'm not sure if it was for a public comment or a general and, and agenda item specific, but when I said that our practice has been, it, I meant that what we usually do during council meetings, not what we're allowed to do and what, um, the agenda says we can do. So what we've done in every council meeting since Zoom began, since we started Zooming, is reading all comments into the record.
I, I don't recall reading all comments into the record. Um, I know I have seen a few of them here and there, but I don't remember seeing all comments into the record. And maybe that's something that we want to clarify as a council later, moving forward, of if you read them all, um, beforehand. But, uh, I don't recall that ever being a set policy of sorts.
We actually changed, um, and this was, I want to say back in June now. Previous agendas actually said we would read them into the record. And, um, we made a change in, in June, um, for a couple of reasons. But the, um, the agendas now, as they're published, say incorporate into the record. And that was done, uh, deliberately so that, um, one, uh, commenters could be given the opportunity to both call and talk and then also submit a written comment. But secondarily, um, it was done as a way to make, to ensure that we weren't, um, that we were getting an accurate record. So we were only incorporating written documents and then the, the verbal comments would be characterized as the verbal comments as they are, uh, in a normal council meeting. So not to conflate the two. We do have one of our comments on an agenda item later, that there is a specific crest, a request to read into the record. And, um, I, I am aware of at least one of those on a, on an agenda item. Certainly, to your point, Vice Mayor Ora, if the council, you know, at the end of this meeting is interested in adding a future council agenda item where we modify the format of how we receive public comments or change that process, that is very much within the council's purview.
Good. Shall we move forward, council? Seeing no objection? Any agenda changes for American Fire Protection District or City of American Canyon? And we'll move forward. The consent calendar for American Canyon Fire Protection District? Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt it.
Second.
Motion second, please.
Councilmember Albedamos?
It'll be Director, sorry.
I'm sorry, Director Albedamos? Director Joseph?
Yes.
Director Larry is absent. Director Ora?
Yes.
And Chair Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Hey, moving on to general business items for the American Canyon Fire Protection District this evening. Matters related to the American Canyon City Council, consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar for the American Canyon City Council.
Mayor, I want to note for the record, we did, the council did receive distribution of four comments from the public related to this item tonight, this consent item. None of which requested to be read into the record.
All right. Was there a second?
I moved it.
Is there a second?
I, I'm my concern is on B two. There were some issues raised relative to the ordinance. And I don't know if the person, Jason, who raised them, Jason Kishinev, if he's there and wanted to speak on it, or if he just wanted those comments added to the record. I don't want to preclude his option of making his case.
Mr. Kishinev is not on the line. I have received his comments.
And they'll be part of the record, too?
Correct.
Is there anyone else on the line who wants to comment on this topic?
Oh, wait, Mr. Kishinev is on the line. He has not raised his hand. Mr. Kishinev, if you
I guess, point of order, if we want him to comment, we would have to take this off of consent first.
Correct. And that would be my recommendation. Again, point of the consent calendar is to have, you know, topics that don't generate any comment or topics that are non-controversial in nature. So if, that would be staff's recommendation is to go ahead and pull it and
I'd like to pull B two then for discussion, and then with that in mind, I'll second the motion to approve B one, the other consent item.
Okay. Councilmember Albedamos?
Yes, to approving consent minus B two.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Larry is absent. Vice Mayor Ora?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, that's what we'd be for item B two for Mr. Kishinev to make his comments.
I'll second Mark Joseph's motion to pull it off consent.
Okay, so Councilmember Albedamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Again, Councilmember Larry is absent. Vice Mayor Ora?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So the second reading, I read by Title only, and introduce a new American Canyon code, Chapter eight, Article two, Personal Indoor Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance.
And again, assuming that if Mr. Kishinev doesn't raise his hand, I think his concerns related, one of his concerns relates to the need to get permits. And I think if the city manager can clarify the rationale and so forth on that, at least.
I'd be happy to. We have our community development director here who oversees our building permit process and is the author of the report. So I'm actually gonna defer to him if the council's okay with that.
Yes.
I see no disagreement, so.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and council members. Just to respond to the issue of building permits, if we go all the way back to the time the ordinance was being developed, the Napa County Cannabis Coalition was very concerned about special rules for cannabis that didn't apply to other normal situations. And taking that logic, there are some times that we have unpermitted construction and we have an administrative citation process to address that. And so for folks who are growing cannabis at home, it may be that they may have made some improvements that need a building permit, but they didn't get one. And so the ordinance applies the very same process to cannabis-related improvements that you might have for any other improvements, so that the rules are the same without prejudice to whether it's cannabis or non-cannabis. And so that's what the ordinance is referring to. As we talked about at the time the ordinance was being presented, in some cases, and this would be one of them, the ordinance itself isn't establishing new rules. It's really a source of information for folks who are growing cannabis at home to know what the rules are that apply to them. And among the rules that apply to them would be a reminder to get a building permit for if they need to make any improvements to help facilitate their indoor cultivation. And they can always call us and find out if what they have in mind is something that needs a permit or not. So hopefully that's answered, would put it to ease Mr. Kishinev's concern about building permits.
Okay, thank you. One other thing I wanted to just dovetail on real quickly is that the terminology, in our case, we call pieces of paper from the city that are related to construction, building permits, and that's a physical document. It's a noun. The word permit is a noun. It's not, we're not talking about permission as in the sense of discretionary, meaning if somebody were to apply for an electrical service to their house or something for cannabis, this is not permission. This is not discretion. We're not placing any sort of judgment one way or another on the actual use, the cannabis itself. This is merely trying to establish that safe building codes are going to be adhered to so that the current occupants and future occupants of that structure have comfort in knowing that safety has been held paramount, and there are not any dangers from stray electrical wires or other reasons. And so whether that electrical circuit that was requested a building permit for was related to cannabis or was related to an accessory dwelling unit or is related to a room expansion in their house, the standards, as Brent mentioned, is the same, and it's done for the safety of the current and future occupants. But it has with zero judgment or zero discretion as to whether it was cannabis or not. That's not relevant.
I have two follow-up questions from Mr. Cooper and Mr. Holly. One is, these types of permits, are they prohibitively costly? And the second question is, can you still have six plants without necessarily needing a permit? So can you just plant stuff and not need extra electricity, extra lights, and continue on your cannabis planting journey that way?
Councilmember Apodice, I have no personal experience with growing cannabis at home, but I have grown houseplants. I'm guessing they're probably similar, and I've never needed to have any special equipment. So somebody could use indoor fixtures, lights that are already there to grow their cannabis. There's no, I don't think there's any necessity to do it. I suppose if you want to have really good plants, you might want to have some special grow lights. I know there's a whole industry that's geared towards being able to grow cannabis at home. There's workshops and kits and package units and things that one can buy. It really make it simple. The building permit itself is, they're not costly. They're fairly minor permits. If one were getting electrical permit for plumbing, building a whole new room for it, of course, that's a different matter, but we're just sundry improvements in homes. The goal here is for safety, and permits are tied to the cost to provide service to ensure the safety. And in some cases, they're subsidized for the more smaller permits because really the goal here is to make sure that people build things that are safe and that we inspect them and that we don't want cost to be the obstacle.
So just like with any other structure, if I wanted to change the lighting in my house right now, I would have to get a permit from the city. And it would be exactly the same if I wanted to grow six cannabis plants that required more electricity. I would need to get a permit from the city, right?
If you had special lights that needed to be wired in place. If you're just changing out the bulb, then you wouldn't. But if you're changing the electrical wiring, then it's a minor permit and inspection. Make sure it didn't burn the house or cause a problem, which, being Fire Prevention Week, I know that's on everyone's mind.
Any further comment on this?
Yes, actually, we have Jason Kishinev. I am going to unmute you, Mr. Kishinev. Please begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Excellent, thank you, and thank you for clearing up the bit about permits. That is good to hear. But I have concerns, first of all, that I don't think you can require people to invest like a thousand dollars in filtration systems and ventilation systems in order to grow cannabis. I believe that law would be excluding people based on income, and I don't believe that is constitutional at all. I wonder what the purpose is of excluding people from using bathrooms and kitchens. Not that I would personally choose, yeah, my growing experience is really limited and was very unsuccessful when I was younger as well. But I mean, if somebody's got an extra bathroom that they want to use, that seems like a perfect room. And so I'm curious why the city is telling people what they can and can't do with their own rooms in their own houses. Fire extinguisher seems like a reasonable precaution, but I don't know that you require people who smoke cigarettes or ovens to have fire extinguishers. And so I'm not sure why it's required by law when really the safer way to grow cannabis is in your backyard. And that's what this council should be really looking at. You have another clause in there where it says that a set of grow lights cannot, in quotation marks, adversely affect the health or safety, unquote, by causing glare, heat, light, dust, vibrations. And that's curious because any set of grow lights is going to cause dust, heat, vibrations, some buzzing probably. And though you really cannot grow inside without grow lights, is my understanding. My limited attempt was to try it without grow lights, and after several months, they were little pathetic things. And then I got in trouble with my parents. And then there's another section where you're excluding, where you say that a person has to be hooked to a sewer system, which, you know, I mean, that sounds reasonable, especially if everybody is, but why? Why are you excluding anybody that might be on a septic system? This law is making it illegal for them to grow, and I'm not sure that that is in accordance with the, I can't think of the right word that I'm trying to come up with, but I'm not sure that that is synonymous with Prop sixty-four. Like, we're supposed to be able to grow six plants indoors. We're not supposed to have to get permits. We're not supposed to be forbidden from using bathrooms and kitchens. We're not supposed to have to invest a thousand dollars in filtration systems. I can tell you that my neighbors sometimes cook fish, and I hate the smell of fish. But nobody is out there seeking anybody who cooks fish to have to dump a thousand dollars into a filtration system to make sure the smell doesn't bother neighbors. That just seems unreasonable, and a lot of this I don't think would stand up to a court challenge, and I think should be removed. I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this matter?
Not at this time.
Okay, very good. So we'll return to council here for the discussion desired action. Council?
One of the concerns I have with any new ordinance is that we follow up six months or a year later to assess whether there are any unintended consequences. I'd like to think that Mr. Kishinev's concerns are overreacting, that we aren't going to be breaking into people's homes to see if they've got proper ventilation and so forth. On the other hand, I think we need to review this six months or twelve months down the road to make sure that this is there for situations when things get out of hand, not hassling people who want to grow with or without grow lights, you know, whether they're well-mature plants or just sad sacks. Either way, it's your right to do that. So I guess where I'm coming from is I'm okay with the provisions of the ordinance. I just want to make sure that we don't misinterpret it to be green light to go in and hassle people because they're growing marijuana.
I think that's been our process all along. I'll reflect back on how we develop our ordinance in the process, you know. Certainly, it's a review of how we achieved it. There are things we need to refine, fine-tune, make it better. Your points, I'll take it.
Yes.
That's the way we approach this whole ordinance, in my right of course.
Yes, I just want to make sure we have that follow-up to make sure it's happening as we envision, that we're not using it to hassle people just to protect us.
Certainly, certainly.
Put it on the calendar for a year from now, we can check back in.
I think that we should address, Jason, sorry, Mr. Kishinev brought up several issues, several concerns, and I think we should address them. But I have a quick two cents on the ventilation issue that I already addressed with the city manager prior to this meeting. I don't really understand that requirement either, because to me, someone smoking marijuana on their front porch or in their backyard is going to get to my house, whereas somebody growing marijuana inside of their house, I'm not as likely to smell that, especially with this six-plant maximum requirement. So I don't really understand the ventilation aspect of it. However, I do understand that this ordinance is more for enforcement, to provide tools for enforcement for when things do get out of hand or if things do get out of hand. And I would just like for us to address that and the rest of Mr. Kishinev's concerns. Please.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I could respond to some of those comments that we've heard?
Yeah, please, Brent.
With, if I could just maybe go in order, we did talk about the building permit issue, the filtration and ventilation system. I think all of us and Councilmember Joseph, I think, spoke to this issue. For the most part, six plants can be grown, and it doesn't cause any any health hazards or concerns of the neighbors, odor and the like. When we look at an ordinance, we do want to consider what might be an unintended consequence of something that happens that we didn't think about could happen. And so in some cases, it functions like an umbrella. You want to make sure that you covered enough there so that if something happens that you didn't think could happen, but probably it did, well, then you have an ordinance there to support you. And so for the most part, it would seem six plants can be grown without causing an odor concern. There are package facilities and things you can buy that come with the filtration built into it. There is a whole system that is available, but I think as the mayor had pointed out, there is no permit needed for growing itself. There is no regular inspection process. Really, the only time that I can think of where the city might be involved is through a complaint. And so some of these issues that the ordinance addresses, maybe items that neighbors are complaining about odor is one that was a big concern when the cannabis ordinance was being considered. And so that's addressed with this, but I think we might acknowledge that no permit requirement, no inspection requirement, grow your six plants, no one's complaining about odor. There really isn't a problem there. If someone is complaining about odor, then either maybe something has gone sideways in some way or the other, or maybe there is a new strain that just happens to be, you know, powerful in the way it smells. Hard to say. And so really, with the concept of an umbrella, the Um, and so really with the concept of, of an umbrella, um, the ordinance is, is intended to have provisions in place that if there's, there's, um, neighbor-to-neighbor conflicts, we have, we have something in the ordinance to fall back on. If we go, uh, onto the next issue, um, with kitchens and bathrooms, so those are, you know, little important rooms in the house that get a lot of use. Uh, Mr. Kishneff makes a great point, uh, if somebody has a spare bathroom. Um, I can't see how the city is going to make a care about that, if, if it's unused and it's extra. Um, but the point here is that if, if there is, um, family living in a place and the bathrooms are in use, then, then you've got a lot of interplay, um, and it's likely that, that there could be a conflict there, um, with, with growing plants. Um, especially if you want robust plants, you have other facilities there to support it. Most houses' bathrooms aren't all that large, um, and so you're, um, jockeying around them. And so, uh, I think that's one of the reasons why that is an issue there. Once again, the city isn't checking things out and inspecting. It's oftentimes if there's some other reason to be there, some other complaint. It, it could be a consequence of something else that's, that's, um, not quite right. Um, the, uh, I think, I think those are, are the, are the issues unless I overlook something.
The septic versus sewer.
Oh, that's right. Um, that too is another one where, um, if, if there's a lot of pollutants and things, it could be if there's a septic system, it could get into the groundwater. Um, it is really one of those issues where, um, it could be something, um, that spells some other issue that's come into play. That, it's, once again, it's kind of like the umbrella, uh, concept, uh, just trying to make sure that.
Can we legally prevent someone who is on septic from not growing six plants if the state of California has legalized it for every dwelling unit? Can we legal, legally do that? Because if I, if I want to grow six plants and I live somewhere in, in, you know, somewhere on septic, can you legally stop me if the state has granted me permission to grow six plants, or does the state ordinance also talk about septic versus sewer?
Mm-hmm.
Part of the good news is, I, the, maybe the real question is, is do we have any, uh, space, any places here that are on septic? And offhand, I think Fran Lemos is the only one that I know of, and, you know, she may be frustrated over not being able to grow six plants, but I'm not so sure, so.
It sounded like the issue is more related to disposal of wastewater from the irrigation, yeah. Um, if it gets to the groundwater, it seems to be what they're trying to get at. Just an observation.
That, that may be something, um, where perhaps that belt or suspender isn't necessary. I don't know if the city attorney has a, has an opinion on, on striking that particular provision from the final ordinance.
I think the way that I'd look at it is that, um, this is an enforcement mechanism. Right? I think, you know, is there the danger of it being applied in a way that would discriminate against growing six plants? I think that's always a possibility, but that's why there are challenges known as, as applied. And that would test the, the, uh, decision-making power of the ministerial official. In essence, the person issuing the building permit. So, um, you know, we went through and we looked at it and we compared it to other situations, and certainly compared it to the issue of whether there could be a problem where there would be a taking. In other words, a, uh, inconsistency with the constitutional grant that you just referred to, council member. And, and we've got a recent case that we use that for, it's the Santa Cruz case. And I think on balance, our conclusion was that this is reasonably related to habitability also. So it would be justified on that basis. But if you'd like to have a specific analysis on this, uh, we'd be glad to do it, to employ those standards so that there's no question, uh, about its inclusion in the ordinance. I think that might be a way to approach it. I see the validity for the argument when you associate it or separate it from the balance of regulation that's advanced. But I think, you know, the starting point from the consultant and the starting point for the comparison here was this idea of what are standards that are generally related to habitability? And if the issue is those six plants, are there anything in the growing of those six plants that could, um, uh, not be related directly to habitability? And, you know, I can understand the argument as you now raise it. So, um, I'd be willing to analyze that more specifically before you act on the matter.
I, honestly, I think that that would only be relevant if we have people within our city limits who are on septic. If we don't, then it's a moot point.
I think, I think Fran's right. I think Fran's the only place.
I, I can think of a single residential property, and, and Councilmember Joseph already alluded to it, so. Um, it has a very, very limited application.
Oh, and, and also, Mayor May, perhaps, um, there is also a standard section in every ordinance that if there is a severability clause, that if there's anything in an ordinance that might lead to uh, a problem, it's severed from the rest and the balance remains in place. This perhaps could be one of those issues.
Which from a legal perspective is great, but from an, for, a law enforcement perspective, you're already going to put the resident, potential resident through a whole lot of trouble just to get to that point of having to prove severability. So.
Okay, wait, I think there's an example that I, I think that the application, why, uh, you might, uh, it's a factor you might think about. Is I think the overall intent here is an enforcement mechanism, right? And I can think of past experience where we had a standard just like this, only for regular commercial use, production, right? Um, a hot plant, Coca-Cola. And there were standard just like this. Standard conditions for habitability, and weren't related to residential, but they were, they were directly related to commercial use. And what happened? The user decided to bypass the sewer requirement so that there, you know, was a situation where that, you know, the endangerment to any part of the sewer system was, you know, directly violated. So that's one aspect here where that could happen is you don't want to be in a situation where you lack authority if you go in and you find in a normal, um, situation for uh, growing what's constitutionally allowed. Someone because of some other issue has bypassed the connection to the city sewer requirement. So although they may seem unlikely in the context of commercial development, it's the, the same kind of application. And the city actually has a, an example of where that was bypassed.
Is there a reason why we can't adopt this now, and then, as you do your investigation, we can amend it later to be in line?
Yeah.
You know, I think there's, I, I, I mean, I, I get a sense here that, you know, we're reasonable with a couple of questions here that we, we may be out of line, we could adopt it and amend it to be in line with the, with the ordinance, right? And so it'll be easier to pick up rather than table now, which also helps us address, put into place some things with, in terms of, you know, remember that we put this in place because of criminal activity that has been happening in American Canyon. And we want to make sure that we provide those safeguards for grow, for illegal growhouses that are here and provide, um, some things of that nature, uh, and, and also provide an understanding for how people can grow, uh, personal plants inside their homes.
You could do that if you, yeah, when the motion comes up, you could provide that in the motion that there be direction to accomplish that review.
I, I agree with Vice Mayor Oro. Um, I just, because of the fear of illegal growhouses, I don't want us to be overly burdensome or overly inclusive on people who are actually following the law. And that's why I asked the question of if we actually have the legal authority to do that. Um, I just have one more question. I think that the question about why people cannot grow in bathrooms and kitchens, um, was still left a little bit ambiguous for me. Um, I've been shopping around for houses, some of them have five bathrooms, and what's, I, I don't understand what the harm is. Um, I, I guess if you have five kids and they're in and out of that bathroom, it makes sense, but that's kind of like telling someone that you can't bring alcohol to your house because you have children who are not twenty-one that live there. I don't think that's on us to regulate. So can you just, um, try to clarify the bathroom kitchen, why people can't grow there a little bit? Can you just try to clarify that a little bit more for me? I don't understand what the harm is.
Um, well, the ordinance requires, um, areas for cultivation need to be separated from, from children that are under twenty-one years of age. So bathrooms and kitchens are areas that generally are accessible to all members of the family and guests. So, um, and they're, and they're used highly, it's not like it's a, a sequestered room somewhere. I mean, there could be situations, which is what Mr. Kishneff mentioned, is with a few people living in a house, and it's a large house, and they've got a spare bathroom somewhere. Um, then, then I see the point. Um, but in most cases, in most homes, they're, they're, they're pretty, um, you know, commonly used rooms. People are running out all the time.
Is that a regular thing that's included in these kinds of ordinances? Because I, the way I feel about that specific thing based on the reasoning that you're giving me is basically, it's just like telling someone you can't put a bottle of wine in your kitchen because you have kids who are under twenty-one. And, and we don't do that, we don't have the authority to do that, so why would we have the authority to do this? I, I don't understand that.
Well, and, and if I can add on to that, I mean, I agree that there's some provisions here that could be onerous if, if we're, if we were so inclined to be that way. So I, I like the idea of Vice Mayor Oro's suggestion that we go ahead, but, but kind of go back over and come back with an amended ordinance, uh, in short order that kind of reflect these concerns. Or maybe if we can be more generic, so that we're just saying, look, uh, if you've only got one bathroom, that shouldn't be the, the room you put your six plants in. But I don't know if we should spell it out like that, maybe something that just says you, 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 you have to, I don't know.
Responsibility for your underage kids.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's going to be a matter of, uh, uh, are they, uh, used or not? I mean, you've got a good point, but it's empty, nobody's in there.
Yeah, I, I think it, it ought to be driven by, are we, yeah, are we keeping, you know, minors away from it, that kind of thing. How are you?
Right, separation from, uh, from, uh, household members and, uh, and the grow place, yeah.
Right.
Mayor and Council, it's going to be my suggestion, what, what's agendized tonight is a, is a second reading. And, and while it's permissible to fix typos and make small changes, what the council is rightfully considering is substantive changes to, to how we craft, uh, craft this ordinance. So, um, what I think would be more appropriate is to provide some additional feedback to staff on what you'd like to see in a revised ordinance, uh, and, and have us noodle on some of those changes. Uh, you know, we, we went a specific direction with this, and the council saw this and discussed it in the first reading. And, and now is, again, that's why we have two readings, is we really get into some of the, the thought processes with ordinances, is you, you take it, uh, you take a second time to, to read through the ordinance as opposed to a single action. So, um, you know, the instance, uh, in, in particular around secure areas for minors, uh, those under, under twenty-one, um, that's a fairly substantive, substantive change. The ordinance is written right now, puts emphasis on secure, isolated areas for, for plants. And if, if it's the council's perspective that that's overburdened some and, and, and not wanting to, to, to be that way, then we need to think through how we might, um, how, how we might, um, kind of wind some of that back. And, and, and that's a, and, and that, those are all policy, you know, direction that the council is free to, to direct staff to do, but it's, it is fairly substantive.
I, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that standard. Uh, I, I guess what I'm saying is that is the standard we should apply. It, the ordinance then goes on and kind of, uh, you know, nails down other options, saying, you know, you can't use bathrooms and kitchens. I think that's the part we could probably exclude and just say, look, uh, if, if you, you know, if, if you're in a studio apartment with three young children and you want to grow six plants, it may be problematic. But if you're in a big house, you know, whatever room you want to pick, as long as you can isolate it, you know, knock yourself out. I think that's kind of the sense I'm trying to get to.
Now, that's, that's something where I'm also, uh, Councilmember Joseph, you know, is isolation, separation from, uh, the rest of the household. I think that's the intent.
So let me go ahead and read a subsection seven, this is eight oh two oh four oh. And it, um, you see, maybe that the language is a, as we think it is. It says, "Personal cannabis cultivation shall not interfere with the primary occupancy of a building or structure, including regular use of kitchens or bathrooms." And so, yeah, I think there is an attempt with that, with that adjective regular to kind of get at what you're saying. If you have a studio with a bathroom and, and a small kitchenette, that's probably not the place for six plants. But if you have a four-bedroom, five-bathroom house with one of those half baths not necessarily being needed anymore, and there's a way to meet number one, where you can secure that in some manner, then I don't know that that would be the, the regular use, um, and if, and again, I think some of this comes back to the context of when some of this might, might apply. If, if for some reason we're drawn into a code enforcement complaint about odor and find six plants and a half bath in a house with four other bathrooms, I'm not sure we're going to take the position that that half bath is missing its regular use because of these cannabis plants. I'm not sure that we're going to be necessarily going there. If we're going to be going into an apartment where that's the only bathroom and, and, or in a mobile home, for example, and that's the only bathroom, and, and the six plants in that bathroom are odoring into the, the mobile home ten feet away or less, that may be one of those instances where we're saying, yeah, that, that's both the regular use and the odor issue.
Jason, after you read that, I'm fine with that language that you cannot interfere with the regular use of.
Regular use.
Which, um, I just think that we need to figure out whether we can legally say septic cannot, um, considering the fact that the state has granted everyone the ability. And I think we also, I think it's very important to remember that we need to provide an enforcement authority for our law enforcement. Um, ASAP, we can't just keep on fixing and fixing and fixing. We need to get something started and enforced so that our law enforcement has a tool if they do come across massive grow, illegal grow house, so that they can actually do something about it. Um, and so I don't want to wait any longer to enforce. I'm, I'm fine with that language specifically.
And, and I'm okay with moving forward. The idea is, uh, you know, let's also look at it to see if the language, you know, if we do need to amend it down the road, because if we continue it to make changes, it seems to me we'd all have to start all over again anyway, so we may as well get what we've got, and if we've got to clean up any language, we can do that later. But that'll at least put us in a better position to enforce any of the serious, uh, illegal grow houses that may be happening.
Certainly, and I, I, I do think under oh five oh, sub B, uh, subsection four, talking about, um, the cultivation area and a connection to, to public sewer system, simply striking that, that, that application is within what you would consider for a second reading to say, we're just striking that language. Um, the other parts would stay the same. So if, you know, again, sometimes we're browsing from other instances, and I can think of only one residential parcel in American Canyon where that would apply. Um, this would be a, a fine time if we wanted to, if the council wanted to, to strike that, that piece of, of B sub four. Um, and that's not necessarily a, a substantive, uh, change.
I'll make a motion that we amend the final.
Before we move, before we go on to any other motions, we do have one more public comment, if we want to allow that, Mayor. We have someone who raised their hand?
Yes.
Okay, so this is Jeanette Farrell. Ms. Farrell, I am going to unmute you. Please begin speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, is this, um, I'm, I'm really curious as to why you would, in a place that's so prone to fires, that we, we would be requiring people to grow their, um, cannabis indoors. I, I have, um, you know, friends who are firefighters in, um, San Francisco, and they said there's a huge number of fires that they wind up putting out that are related to grow rooms and, uh, the lights. It, it seems really kind of counterintuitive that Napa County would require it to be indoors. That make sense?
Mayor, I could answer that question if you like.
Yeah.
Please, Ms. Cooper.
Um, yes, it's the, uh, state initiative that allowed for legality of, of personal grow of cannabis and, and possession and use. Um, allows for six plants in, grown inside a home. So it's, it's a state law that was adopted by the citizens of California.
Did that answer your question?
Uh, somewhat. I, you know, I just, I'm wondering why that that would be exclusively required. Like, is there an? Like, is there an option to amend that somewhat within the, the county level? I know that when I lived in Sonoma County, this was a topic of discussion within the town of Sonoma, where, um, you know, they're also very concerned about fires. And every building I've been in, in American Canyon, pretty much in California, is made out of wood. So this is, just seems like a terrible plan.
Jeanette, that's the reason why, um, we have the permit requirements for any kind of electrical changes that are happening in the home in order to ensure the safety and in order to ensure that houses don't burn down. Um, the topic of this ordinance is enforcement, and, um, the reason why we're talking about indoor is because has, it's been about a year now, right? Um, about a year ago, the council took on a very robust discussion on crafting our ordinance, uh, for cannabis use. And, um, we as a council decided that it was, we were going to start with, um, indoor grows, delivery and, um, manufacture, manufacturing and cultivation and testing, right? Um, and then we wanted to kind of ease our residents into it, um, because the bulk of our residents didn't want outdoor grows and did not want storefronts. And then from there, we were going to, we, the thought process behind that was it's a lot easier to start small and get bigger than it is to give everything and it goes terribly wrong, and then we have to try to wind our residents back. So it's not that outdoor grows are forbidden forever. Um, that's just the ordinance that was crafted a year ago with a lot of input from our residents and our community members. Does that make more sense?
And, and if I can add to that, some of the arguments against the outdoor grow was the odor issue, which at that point, there's no constraint. Uh, and then secondly, the concern that it might become, you know, a, a safety issue in the sense that people would see there's large plants growing and they could break in. And, and so there was some concerns with safety and odor. But frankly, the fire risk didn't come up as a counterpoint. Uh, so you make a good point, and nowadays, fire concern is certainly legit, but that was the balancing act at the time.
Well, fire in the house would be, uh, modifying your electrical system, for example, to, for more power somehow, uh, legged into the system, and that, and that's unsafe. And yes, I would imagine a lot of grows are, uh, if one in that analyzed the cause of the fire in the house, it's probably related to electrical malfunction or, uh, something that violates code in terms of where it was put together. Okay, well, I don't see our caller online, but thank you for your comment. Anybody else on this?
No additional comment there.
Okay, we were, I think we were in the middle of a motion being made to the effect on this.
I think the first was to amend the final draft to delete the reference to public sewers.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that we delete that.
Would that be a delete that and adopt?
Incorporate that into your.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading, uh, but, uh, strike that provision relative to public, or public sewers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyrius absent, Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Council. Moving on to our agenda. Public hearings, we have done this evening. We'll take up our business items next. Item D1, approve a resolution to establish administrative civil penalties for personal indoor cannabis cultivation ordinance.
Ironically, Mayor.
We're the same.
We're not done with this yet.
Uh, was not intended to be that way, but I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Brent Cooper again, and we can recap, uh, this item.
All right. All right, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have, um, a brief presentation. Um, we've covered some of the territory, so I'll go through it quickly. Um, and I'll share my screen. Okay. Um, hopefully everything is visible there. Um, as we talked about, uh, personal cultivation is permitted inside the house or in a greenhouse in the backyard. Uh, outdoor cultivation's prohibited, um, according to the 2018 ordinance. Um, the reason we are looking for reasonable standards is to address these concerns having to do with building code violations, uh, over the limit of the allowable number of indoor plants or, or commercial cultivation inside of a house, which I know we just, we just talked about. Um, other issues have to do with good neighbor standards and, and minor child access prevention, um, or other reasons for standards in the ordinance. So, uh, as we talked about, um, the enforcement purpose is to deter homes from being used for commercial cultivation.
Mr. Cooper, are you moving slides or we only see the title slide still?
Oh, uh, apologize, I see there, let's. Okay, apologize for that, uh, let's. Apologize for the technical. All right.
There we go.
Okay, all right, I think I've got the solution here. Um, okay. Apologize for that. Uh, okay, as I've mentioned, uh, personal residents in greenhouse, uh, backyard, um, building code violations and over the limit in commercial cultivation are reasons to have reasonable standards, as well as good neighbor standards and minor child age, uh, access limitations. Uh, as we talked about just, just in our prior item, um, purpose, uh, purpose for head enforcement is to deter homes from being used for commercial cultivation, limit to the maximum allowable. Um, I'd add to that, um, avoidance of, of visibility and, and obvious signs of, of cannabis cultivation to deter would-be criminals from stealing it. Um, and then also, um, address building code violations from uncommitted improvements. So, um, the way the resolution is structured is we have four different categories of enforcement, um, as we see here on the screen with building and zoning violations, indoor cultivation, uh, both two tiers. Now, this is a, a response to our previous discussion on October 6th with the city council, taking a look at, at indoor cultivation from two different points of view. We have kind of a smaller violation tier, uh, and then, uh, larger one that speaks more to the commercial, uh, cultivation that might happen inside houses. And then, of course, outdoor cultivation, which was, uh, prohibited through an earlier ordinance. So with, uh, we kind of had a nice discussion of this already, um, so I won't go into a whole lot of detail related to building and zoning violations. Um, the enforcement process for this is already set up with our administrative citation ordinance in the municipal code. Um, and so the resolution here is referring back to that process. Um, it refer, it talks about, um, the process including two courtesy notices. Um, and so folks who may have a violation wouldn't receive a fine or anything, will get a notice in form that they have a violation, and then you have two opportunities to correct it, um, where there was no fines. Um, if, uh, the person receiving the violation notice feels that this is unfair, there is an appeal process for that, as well as all the other, uh, enforcement processes, but there is one for this certainly as well. Uh, if the correction doesn't happen with two courtesy notices, uh, the ordinance does allow for progressive fine through a citation process. And then at, or citations, the city attorney does have the authority to, uh, make a decision whether to prosecute that as a misdemeanor. So that's pretty straightforward, standard process for any building code or zoning violation. Um, with the indoor cultivation, uh, violation of up to, uh, 20 cannabis permits, of course, six is permitted, so this would kick in at seven to 20. Um, it's a smaller fine, it's the amount that we discussed at our last workshop, uh, it's $200 a plant for the maximum of $1,000 a day. The ordinance does say that each day a violation exists is a new violation, and so every day can become a violation. Um, that isn't necessarily how things are always implemented, um, but it is a, it is availability with the ordinance, um, as we have for the administrative citation process. Um, an applicant or somebody who feels that they were unfairly, um, charged are, could just have an appeal process, um, and the enforcement continues until the number of plants is reduced to six. The second tier is a stepped up, um, fine, uh, for larger numbers of plants indoors. Um, we took the threshold at more than 20, um, and there would be $500 a plant per day, up to $5,000 a day. Uh, should mention that, that the crafting of this resolution, it's been a team effort. Uh, we've been working with HDL, our cannabis consultants, uh, city attorney, uh, looking at this from the perspective of, um, ensuring that we stay within the boundaries of reasonable fines, though not excessive. And then also our police chief, um, too, with the issue of, um, deterrence value. So this process is just like the tier one, except the amount of fine is increased from 200 to 500 dollars per plant, and the maximum day fine is $1,000 to $5,000 a day. And that would continue until, uh, plants are reduced back down to the allowable limit at six. And outdoor cultivation, of course, outdoor cultivation's prohibited, so this would, um, kick in at any plants outdoors. Um, as we discussed at our workshop, uh, two weeks ago, um, the, um, process doesn't go straight into a fine, um, it follows a more traditional administrative citation process where they would get two courtesy notices to remove the plants. And the fines wouldn't begin unless, um, the, uh, person didn't remove the plants and, uh, didn't appeal and, or appeal was unsuccessful. So with that brief presentation, um, there was a resolution that goes with this item, um, and that would spell out each of these enforcement processes, um, for the different situations that we discussed.
Okay, thank you for the presentation, Cooper. Council comment, discussion? I think we've captured, uh, seems like we captured our conversation from the last discussion we had on this.
Yes, Mayor, yes, Mayor.
Are we good with it?
Yes.
Well, are we, council ready for a public comment on this matter? Let's see, while he had nodding up and down, do we have public comment on this?
There is no comment at this time, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll close, public comment, return to council for any further discussion or adoption of your case.
If there's no further discussion, I will make a motion, and I'm slow rolling my, my resolution.
Say something really fast.
Okay, see, I knew it.
Really fast. Um, I just want to say, um, I, I believe that this captured the intention of the council. Um, I like the fact that you distinguished by the number of plants. As what we're trying to do is prevent bad behavior, um, not necessarily punish the, the little guy who's just following the law and makes a mistake. And I think that the different fine, the tier structure that you implemented, or maybe implementing after David's motion, um, definitely shows that, so thank you.
All right.
Councilmember Joseph, I know you're itching to say something, so.
No, I, I'm gearing up to second you.
All right.
All right, good.
With that, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution number 2020, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon, California, establishing administrative civil penalties for violation of American Canyon Municipal Code, Chapter 8 dot 02, Personal Indoor Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance.
Second that.
Motion second, roll, roll call please.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyrius absent, Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Council. Moving on to item to D2, adopt a resolution approving the 2020 Wetlands Edge Speed Survey Report, setting the speed limit on Wetlands Edge Road and directing city clerk to file the 2020 Wetlands Edge Speed Survey Report with the Napa County Traffic Court. Tap report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council, I'll turn it over to Rick Kaufman, Public Works Director.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, so I'm here to talk about the Wetlands Edge, uh, traffic study. In 2016, a, a study was done, uh, for setting speed limits citywide, uh, a number of the streets were surveyed, Wetlands Edge is not one of those, um, but the, the speed limit was confirmed in that report. However, uh, California Vehicle Code, Section 40802, requires that a survey be done every five years in order to, uh, validate the speed limit for radar enforcement. Uh, so after going through the traffic calming project on Wetlands Edge, it was decided to undertake a, a speed survey and an engineering calculation of, of that speed limit to either validate it or change it, uh, to make it enforceable. So, um, I don't know that everybody wants me to walk through the, all the steps to establish a speed limit. Uh, I did follow the federal highway guidelines for, um, setting speed limits using an engineering methodology. Um, it turned out there, there were some interesting results in there. Uh, the 85th percentile speed, which is the, the basis for starting calculations on speed limits, didn't really change very much after putting in the traffic calming, uh, but it did drop down the top speeds of vehicles. If you look at the, um, the data table in the reports, vehicles traveling over 40 miles an hour are almost nonexistent out of, uh, oh gosh, I think 137, 140 vehicles, there are only two vehicles traveling over 40 miles an hour. So it did slow the top end of speeding. Um, so the, the report did validate the 25 mile an hour speed limit. That it has been reviewed and concurred by both the police department and the fire department. Uh, and so with that, I would, uh, request council approval, uh, to approve the report and file it with the county. And then I'll turn it over to Chief Ortiz, who will talk about, uh, what the next steps would be once this is approved, and, um, how enforcement would be enacted out there on Wetlands Edge.
Well, thank you for the report, it's good to see the, uh, the data on it. Uh, well, that's a very catchy old formula there for calculating all this stuff. I don't think I've seen anything like that since, uh, probably algebra class or something. But I, I was impressed with the, uh, the data on it. Uh, you know, there's a couple of people on there, 40 miles an hour, that first out of, there was a way, cite that, that is very unsafe on that street. I know the residents there have been concerned for a long time, and it's been a number of them on, on Wetlands Edge. But I think, yeah, it's, uh, do you think maybe the, the traffic calming devices have been effective, that's good enough?
So. I, I do think they have been effective. Um, I started here and I had driven down Wetlands Edge, I'd seen a couple of vehicles actually traveling probably closer to 50 miles an hour. I mean, they, they were, but see that on occasion? And I think the, uh, data collection shows that while the traffic calming hasn't changed maybe the median speed, it has definitely gotten rid of the, the high-end speeding on Wetlands Edge.
What do we hear back from residents on the street? They see an improvement?
The feedback has been, um, almost unanimously in favor of, of the traffic calming and of the, uh, the, the measure for the, for the speed limit validation.
Okay, well, you know, maybe this is, uh, applicable in other places in, in the city where we have a lot of complaints of people speeding for residential areas. I'd like the report, thank you. Any other council comment?
I think the chief is gonna add some additional comments.
Yes. And Chief Ortiz?
I've got to take myself off mute, sorry about that. Um, yeah, just, it, I think, um, the traffic calming, um, while the, the number might not be huge, where cars maybe overall slowed down by 10, 15 miles an hour, they slowed down enough to where, um, the, the data that, that our traffic engineer used, um, to validate the 25 miles an hour, um, is now something that, um, now that our department can use to use radar enforcement. Cause prior, uh, without that, without that study, um, you know, we Because prior, uh, without that, without that study, um, you know, we had to find a different way to do speed enforcement. And on that small stretch of road, it's gonna be difficult to speed pace a car. So we were doing like maybe the stop sign, um, you know, further south in different violations. Or, you know, if we get the person going 45, 50, then, you know, that, that's, you know, that's at a reckless level and we're able to, to do speed enforcement for those speeds. So I, I think it was a successful, um, implementation of the traffic calming and the measures, the engineering measures that were put, put in place are a success story. Um, and our plan now is to, uh, look at the numbers, um, for times of days and start adding it to our rotation of the different streets we work radar and lidar on with our motor unit. So it'll be part of our, our rotation, um, and we look forward to, to doing some enforcement, um, using those tools.
Very good. Any further discussion from our state council? Thought we're ready for a public comment? Seeing no objection?
Oh, wait, we do have, we do have one public comment? Just, okay, um, this is a caller. I'm going to unmute you caller and please identify yourself. I've asked you to unmute yourself caller. Caller, can you unmute yourself, please?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Oh, okay, this is, uh, Chris James, um, with some confusion on our side because we have to dial in twice, we were told. Cause it's two of us in the same room, we have to dial on separate phones, so we weren't sure who was gonna get what phone today. So hopefully we won't be any feedback on the phone. First, I want to thank, uh, you know, city staff, especially Rick, uh, Hoffman and, and the chief for working so diligently on this and actually listening to our concerns. And also for the city council for doing likewise. As you know, we've been monitoring, um, traffic 24/7 for approximately, um, 19 months now. We've tracked, um, I'm lagging on my data, you know, um, processing the data, but we've tracked about three to 60,000 cars in that time. So it's, it's, it's not just a small window. I know the study is, is a valid study that you've done, but we've, we track 24/7. You know, hundreds of thousands of cars are trips, we're calling them trips in our report. And, you know, we, we typically see about 800 cars a day go by. It's gone up about 10% year over year, um, this time from, this time last year, it's gone about 10%. And we see a lot more people walking on the trails and crossing the road to get to the trails. So I'm, and I'm glad to see that that was included in the report and actually influenced some of the numbers. We do see, and I'm very concerned about still about the egregious drivers, we do see people doing 50, sometimes over 70 miles an hour. I think this month the record was 73, we have seen up to 77. It sounds ridiculous, but there are a lot of what I would call boy races out there, late at night, racing around, doing crazy speeds. Our streets are becoming, um, like raceways out there sometimes at night. If you go on Nextdoor, I know some of you are residents, you can see that there's some of the discussion on that. It's getting kind of ridiculous out there in some part of the city. So, you know, so why are these numbers important? Why do we, we want to reduce the numbers? You know, if someone gets hit, hit at 40 miles an hour, they have a 90% chance of dying. If someone is doing, you know, if the car is doing 20 miles an hour, you know, you want, you know, it's, it's just, um, a fraction of that. When a one in, uh, nine in 10 people survive getting hit at 20 miles an hour versus 40 miles an hour, it's, it's the totally opposite. So, um, and, and the traffic calming did actually work. You know, I know we're talking percentiles, 85 percentile, there's some discussion in academia, is, is that's really a valid thing anymore? But we did see the numbers drop significantly, um, especially the first week. We, you know, we, I broke down in the, the report I've attached to my emails that you all got today. We saw, um, a big drop at the first weekend and slowly crept back up, but it's kind of holding steady right now. And we saw, um, in the first four months of the year, we saw 200 cars, um, um, you know, egregious speeders, but then that dropped down to 100, you know, that over, over the, that, no, that, that just these crazy drivers that are out there. What else is there? I've got a long list of things to cover.
Mr. James, you have 10 seconds.
10 seconds, okay. So I had encouraged you to go to my report, please go to my report and read that. I've got a lot of comments and suggestions and the next steps and how I'd like to still keep engaged with the city and, um, you know, hopefully implement this across the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your involvement in this project.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, I believe Tammy Wong is also on the same line, is that correct?
Yeah, is that okay? Yeah.
Certainly, yes.
Um, hi.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, um, having personally gathered the signatures for the traffic calming project, it was really rewarding to see the pilot barriers installed at the beginning of May. And it has made a difference in our traffic. And I want, I want to thank the city for working with us on this project. I walk Wetlands Edge Road every day, and so do my elderly parents. They walk much slower now and they're often pushing their great-grandsons in a, in a stroller. I want them to be able to cross the road safely, which wasn't possible for our other neighbor, Arvin, who in February, um, 2019, he was in the class block and he was hit by a hit and run driver. I'm sorry, he was narrowly missed being hit by a hit and run driver, but his dog was not so fortunate. So I want to thank the chief and Rick, and I'm glad we have D two to get the speed radar enforcement allowed. And I urge you to support that. We need the police to have that additional tool. But more broadly, I want to ask the city council to start looking at the comprehensive solutions to address the traffic and speeding problems we are facing. I was looking at the Office of Traffic Safety website today, and they just recently have the 2017 data up. And I don't know if you're familiar with it, but they rank all the cities and they group us by our size, mileage, whatever. They have all these different rating criteria that they munch. And our little city, we rank number one of 101 cities for speed-related crashes. We had 28 fatal and injury crashes. For hit and runs, we are number one out of 101 cities. We had 10 in 2017. I mean, the other top number we had was total fatalities and injuries. We had 81 victims killed and injured, giving us the number three ranking. I mean, those are scary numbers for a little city like American Canyon. And perhaps there's some point in time where the chief can maybe drill down and give us some better metrics. Because I don't know what these metrics are, I just know what they say, and they say American Canyon, 2017. And as a citizen who doesn't have the view that the chief has, or maybe some of you, this is very concerning to me. So I'd like, like us to see, take more steps towards this. Specifically, I'm a champion of Vision Zero. Let's not just adopt it, let's embrace this. I mean, essentially, my understanding it is it's safe streets, which the city has already adopted, but it has the stated objective of zero fatalities and serious injuries. Let's do this. I mean, we, we, there's an easy goal out there we could do for our first item. We could use existing state laws to reduce the speed limits near schools to 15 miles per hour. There's a number of cities that have already done this. You know, let us drive our solution to traffic problem proactively. We need a long-term solution, not shortcuts that only shift our traffic problem from one neighborhood to the next. I really have a lot of energy around this, and if any of you are interested in discussing this further, I would love to talk with you. And Rick, Kristen, I would love to sit down with you further to talk about our traffic calming pilot, maybe review some in more conversations, some of the data we've collected. Because I think the data you gather, gathered is great, but we also have our set of data from our camera, which is running seven by 24. So it's gathering more robust data. So I think between us, you know, we have a good view and I, we, our neighbors also would like to understand our next steps. I don't know if you're going to acknowledge the other public comments that were emailed in, but I know at least.
Can you leave a wrap up, please?
Neighbors have sent in comments, and I would like to see them acknowledged so that everyone knows they're there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your participation. Anybody else?
There is no additional public comment at this time, Mayor.
Maybe Nicole, if, if you wouldn't mind reading the names of the individuals who submitted, uh, comments on agenda item D two, so that they can have their names acknowledged as part of it.
And actually, we did have the one that was requested to be read into the record. So with your permission.
It would be appropriate to do that now.
So, so the one, Robert Scullion, um, requested that his message be read into the record. It says, "We support resolution D two, adopt a resolution approving the 2020 Wetlands Edge Speed Survey Report. As a resident of Wetlands Edge Road, we are still very interested in traffic calming to reduce the daily frequent speeding on our street. We have children playing here, we have a school to be opened soon. It is absurd to view the incessant speeding that we see every day from our yard, our porch and our living room. This is just ridiculous. May we inquire when speed limit enforcement with radar will start on Wetlands Edge Road? This is long overdue. We also need a Westside Connector solution that does not increase traffic volume on the Wetlands Edge Road, which has, which is already, excuse me, which already has a large amount of pedestrian traffic, car traffic, with Park, a school, and a second school opening soon." So.
Thank you, Nicole. I'm just getting back to these comments. I noticed the one also from, from Marion and Jean Sullivan actually did specifically ask for the comment to be read into the record as a public comment as well, if you wouldn't mind reading that one.
Of course. So Marion Sullivan's comment says, "This is to state our support of resolution D two, adopt a resolution approving the 2020 Speed Survey Report. We ask that this email be read into the record as public comment. We walk along Wetlands Edge every day, sometimes more than once a day, and see the need for traffic calming to stay in place, particularly when we know there will be an increase in traffic once in-school learning resumes for all and when this new school opens. Speed limit enforcement with radar is needed on Wetlands Edge Road. Is there a date when this will commence? When considering a solution for the Wetlands, excuse me, for the Westside Connector, it is important to note that Wetland Edge is a residential street. With driveways, increased traffic would be detrimental and dangerous. As part of the 500-mile San Francisco Bay Trail, we need Wetlands Edge Road to be safe for walkers, joggers and bicyclists. Thank you." And then, um, I'm sorry, I'm just going through and looking for the other comment that was asked to be read into the record.
Those were the only ones.
So, so Jamie Potter submitted the following. "I am unable to attend to offer public comments via Zoom for this item. Please accept these comments via email. I request that they be read aloud for the record as my public comment. I serve as a member of the General Plan Circulation Element Committee. I volunteered to help with traffic and safety throughout American Canyon, but our home is on Wetlands Edge. I have a keen interest in the Westside Connector solution and want to ensure that it does not increase traffic volume on the Wetlands Edge Road. We already have a large amount of pedestrian, bicycle and car traffic. Let's also not forget that two schools bookend the majority of Wetlands Edge Road. We have lived at our home on the 300 block of Wetlands Edge Road since 2002. Overtime traffic speeds have increased. That statement is anecdotal in nature. To back up my opinions, I started my own traffic study in March to document facts. Our speed camera was running 24/7, but only counts, but only counts vehicles during daylight hours. It's located on the 300 block of Wetlands Edge Road. To date, we have tracked over 230,000 vehicles since March 6th of 2020. On average, there are 14 vehicles speeding in excess of 40 miles per hour daily during daylight hours. You're welcome to review the raw numbers. Negative 3,164 vehicles traveling at a very, at very unsafe speeds. 3,164 potential deaths or serious injuries. Data predicts we will exceed 5,000 egregious speeders annually along Wetlands Edge Trail. I was engaged early to help bring Traffic Calming Project to the 500 block of Wetlands Edge Road. I wish I could tell you that it made a difference on our block. Since being installed in May, however, there is no noticeable difference in the traffic speeds on the 300 block. This is not an opinion, it's backed up by data. Additionally, we know at least one of our neighbors has already complained about the traffic calming, asking for it to be removed. Too bad, because it has worked on the 500 block backed up with data. So what should we do? If the traffic calming is not working for everyone, or if there's a disagreement about the problem, let's measure it. Data will speak and allow the city and law enforcement to take necessary action. I ask you to support resolution D two, adopt a resolution approving 2020 Wetlands Edge Speed Survey Report. With this, the police have another tool, radar enforcement, available to help reduce the number of egregious speeders we see every day. Forty-five miles, excuse me, 40 miles an hour is egregious. Calculate the revenue that could be collected if just 10% of the anticipated 5,000 egregious speeders were cited. Imagine the life you could save. Thank you, Jamie Potter." So the additional comments were read, uh, were received by Helen Moody, um, Chris James and Tammy Wong, who have spoken.
Okay, thank you. So we've taken care of a public comment on this matter?
Correct, there are no additional comments.
No, okay, we'll close public comment, return to council for, for discussion, desired action. You know, uh, sounds like a great approach to getting on top of, uh, the traffic issues, speeding on Wetlands Edge, and from time to time I'm there. Uh, I just really think it's great to have that tool for, uh, our police force to, to enforce the safety of traffic on that street. Any other?
Just as a technical follow-up, one of the concerns was how soon can this be implemented? Assuming we adopt the resolution tonight, uh, what are the next steps and when will we see, uh, enforcement?
We'll, we'll see enforcement, uh, tomorrow.
Just in case.
Okay, maybe I should clarify it. Uh, when will we officially, uh, update the speeds and all that? Since, since we do have the enforcement. It looks like we have to file with the traffic court. Uh, but I guess it's already posted at 25? Now we have the authority to do radar?
It is, yes. Speed, so the speed limits really staying the same. Now we have a, an engineering study to, to, that we can bring to court with us, or it'll be filed with the traffic court as well. Somebody challenges a speeding ticket. So that's why I'm, we are gonna be able to use radar, you know, tomorrow.
Okay, well, thank you, chief, for being on top of it. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, I remember when we talked about the, um, traffic calming mechanisms being installed over at Wetlands Edge. We were talking about how they are temporary, because we want to see if they work first. And we talked about how, once we figure out whether they work or not, we can put them in other places. I see data that's showing that they are working at the Wetlands Edge. So, um, first part of my question is, what are we gonna do to make something like this more permanent along Wetlands Edge? And my second, the second part of my question is, where are we moving them to next? Because like Tammy suggested, there are several areas in our neighborhood that, um, in our city, I'm sorry, that have frequent speeders. Kimberly is another major street that people use like a freeway. It is super wide. Um, and it comes right off of the freeway, so, um, I would propose that to be next, but I know that that's not the only location. So, um, do we have a plan moving forward? What's, what's this gonna look like?
Yeah, so, um, in answer to the first part of your question, we are going to do our own in-house design. We were waiting to complete the design on James Road. Uh, but we are going to design a, a permanent solution. Very similar to the temporary measures that are in right now, but there'll be, uh, bulb outs and centerline dividers that are made of concrete and delineators, um, that we can install with our own streets crew. Uh, once we have those installed, we will move the temporary measures. Um, and I, I plan on, you know, going over the data with, with the chief Ortiz. And, um, I've, I've heard Kimberly mentioned, I've heard Elliot mentioned, and there are several locations around town that we can look at installing them next.
All right, if, if I can throw out, uh, I'd like to nominate Melvin or James Road, Melvin in particular. I know there's no curb and gutter, but it, it is the original, uh, cut-through traffic lane. And it's kind of the granddaddy of a mall, and it would be nice if we could do something for the residents that, that there.
We are, um, actually at our last traffic working group, we were discussing, um, different approaches we could take at the, at the intersection of, of Melvin and Casair. Uh, and we are looking at some kind of traffic calming measure to install at that intersection to slow down that movement.
Yeah, I'm sure the, uh, the, uh, traffic officers on board have certainly have knowledge of where most problem areas are, so that would be a good resource to check in as well. Can you take further on this, council? Are we ready to, uh, take action on this item? take action on this item?
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020, next in order, a resolution of the City of American Canyon, approving the 2020 Wetlands Edge Speed Survey Report, setting the speed limit on Wetlands Edge Road, and direct the city clerk to file the 2020 Wetlands Edge Speed Survey Report with the Napa County Traffic Court.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Abadamas. Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Larry is absent, Vice Mayor Oro.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate the, all the effort and the study and the data that it produces. Okay, moving on to item D three. Adopt a resolution amending the 20 fiscal year 2021 capital budget and increasing the project budget, authorizing city manager to award a construction contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder in the amount not to exceed the project budgets. And authorizing the Public Works Director to approve the executive and execute contract change orders in the aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget in conjunction with the 2020 Annual Pavement Management Project, TR 20-0100.
Thank you, Mayor. Turn it over to Rick as well for this item.
Uh, I will say I am not going for any kind of Guinness World's Record on, um, naming of resolutions. I'll try and keep them shorter. So, um, I don't have a lot to over regarding the project. I think everyone is aware of what the project is. We just went over the streets report a couple of meetings ago. So we're very excited about this. I do want to, um, we'll pull up, let's see. Sorry. Uh, so this is the, the cover sheet of the ultimate set of plans that we ended up putting out for bid. I do want to recognize city staff, uh, especially Christine De La Santos, uh, and Ron Renata, who, uh, worked very hard on this project. And I, I think we were rewarded today with the bid opening. Uh, we, we see very few bidder inquiries. Uh, the plans were very, very clean, very well put together, and, uh, the bid results reflected that. We received six bids today. Um, the bids were grouped very tightly, uh, with less than a $400,000 difference between the low bid and the high bid. And, um, so we're, we're very happy with the bid results and we're looking forward to a very, very good project. And I will stop sharing this. Figure out how. And, uh, share with you real quickly the, the actual bid results. The bid summary. Um, so this is the bid summary of, of the bids we received today. Uh, staff is still reviewing, uh, checking that all bids meet insurance requirements, industrial relation department requirement, and that they have executed the documents completely. Um, and once a, um, the review is completed, we will make a recommendation to award to the city manager. So, uh, with that, um, I will open it up for questions.
Hey, this is a long-awaited improvement. I think the last time we heard, uh, pavement was, some of it goes back to 1950-something, but, uh, I am pleased to see this moving forward. I think it's going to give a safe route to think about. You can go from, uh, American Canyon Road all the way to, uh, Donaldson Way on sidewalk. That means you can have access to the library and post office and, uh, a much safer path to, to travel. Any questions and comments from state councils?
First off, I noticed the engineer's estimate was a million two and the low bid was a million three. So how does that affect our overall budget?
Uh, it is still within budget. Um, when we put the budget together, we actually, um, built a 10% contingency on the estimate into the budget. Um, we can, um, look at trimming some of our other costs. So it, the award still fits within the, the budget that is set aside.
And then also, in the staff report, you talked about doing some underground utility work, which is good. But that's not part of this bid, or is that?
It is part of this bid, yes. And that's, that was, um, it's part of the change in funding that is also mentioned in the staff report. So originally, we just had funding for the street curb gutter and sidewalk replacements. Um, we also transferred over to this project as part of this, um, item, uh, money from the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Funds, um, to redo some of the service connections and replace the water main, the entire length of the project.
Okay, and just to conclude, I, I appreciate the idea to expedite it to, to, for us to authorize the city manager to, to sign off on the lowest responsive bidder. You're going, I, I would ask that you put a consent item on November 17th, just kind of confirming and ratifying it so that we in the public know what we ended up, uh, you know, contracting for.
Certainly, yes, we can do it.
And then to la, a, a final comment, uh, as the person who is doing a town hall meeting in the middle of the Donaldson Sidewalk, uh, yeah, I'll just say it, fiasco. Uh, I took a lot of heat from the public, uh, and so I do want to congratulate staff because of the process you used, where you met with the, the property owners in advance. And as a result, were able to modify a portion of the project sidewalk that, uh, kind of eliminated some landscaping, but accommodated the, the concerns of, of the property owner. I really want to call you out in, in a favorable sense. I appreciate the fact that, um, you know, we all make mistakes, but if we learn from those mistakes, then it's, uh, training and it's part of our lifelong, uh, education that we have in our new general plan. So I do appreciate the fact that you went through this new process. Uh, I think it reinforces the whole idea. If you meet with people first, you can solve a lot of problems. So thank you for, for the, for how you went about this.
Thank you, and, and it was a group effort. Um, you know, we, we, the Public Works Engineering Department actually received a lot of support through this process from the Public Information Office, with outreach and public meetings. And, uh, further, you know, we're, we're looking to a more successful project in construction as well, uh, because, uh, staff and, and public information staff, uh, developed outreach language, which is now included in our city contracts. So, uh, we don't have to rely on the contractor developing their own language. We are giving them language to communicate with the residents and, and we're including that in our contracts now. Um, so yes, hopefully we have learned, uh, from our mistakes and, and we have better projects in the future.
Hey, any other comment on this? We have any public comment on this?
There is no public comment, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment, return to council for any further discussion on this matter or motion to approve. Uh, I think Councilmember Joseph, if you're commenting, you're muted.
Good point.
Thank you. Um, I'll make a motion, uh, if there's no other comments or if those comments are muted, uh, that we adopt a resolution, uh, amending the 2021 capital budget and increasing the project budget, authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder in an amount not to exceed the project budget, and authorize the Public Works Director to approve and execute contract change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget in conjunction with the 2020 Annual Pavement Management Project.
Second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Larry is absent, Vice Mayor Oro.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Moving on to, uh, business item D four, adopt a resolution authorizing addendum number six and number seven to the Vallejo Water Service Agreement, 2020-A111.
Also, we'll hand it over to Hook Works Director Rick Kaufman for the trifecta this evening.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, council, um, mayor. So, um, I want to say that, uh, right away, I'm going to make a change. And I will share my screen. I believe everybody should have received a revised, uh, resolution this afternoon. This is the, uh, revision put up here with the, the strike through. Um, we are asking the council tonight to only consider, uh, addendum number six and ignore addendum number seven. Um, so addendum number six, um, and, and I'll go back through the history. City of American Canyon, City of Vallejo entered into a water service agreement in 1996, and, uh, that agreement has been modified over the years. Amendment number five was, uh, put in place to supply water to American Canyon High School. This next amendment, oh, gosh, sorry. I'm not moving enough, my lights just turned off. So amendment number six is to supply water to the proposed Canyon Estates subdivision project. That project is located in an area and at such an elevation, um, that the existing American Canyon water system cannot supply enough pressure. The City of Vallejo has the ability to provide adequate pressure water and is willing to sell American Canyon non-exclusive rights to that elevated storage facility, um, to provide water for that project. And that is what we are looking to do here is to, um, make an addendum to the water service agreement for that. Uh, the plan is that eventually, uh, American Canyon will build its own two-and-a-half-million-gallon storage tank um, and be able to supply both the high school and Canyon Estates. Uh, but that project is probably quite some time out. Uh, so with that, I will open it up for any questions you might have.
Assistant Councilmember.
Uh, I, I have one. I guess my first question relates to addendum number seven about the high school. And I don't know, i- it sounds like that agreement has expired and that this would have been more of a formality. Um, is there any problems or is it?
Uh, it is the elevated storage fees are, uh, changing, have been adjusted, and, uh, the City of Vallejo contacted us earl, just earlier today, uh, to request that we have additional discussions, uh, with the elevated storage fees.
Wrong, okay. Then getting to the bigger picture, um, I know I've had discussions with the city manager and I think American Canyon could be in a very good place in terms of, of negotiating with the City of Vallejo. As a personal note, having been here when we were agreeing with it, uh, reading reference to the fact that it's almost 25 years old was just another, uh, reinforcement of how old I am, but that's another story. Uh, I do think it's a good idea that we look at that Vallejo water agreement, uh, because I do think there may be opportunities where we could agree to buy water, particularly the high-pressure water, uh, at, at a better rate than we're currently obligated to. Uh, and in particular, to explore the possibility that if we do get a good deal with Vallejo, that maybe we don't need to consider a tank at all, that we just continue to function with Vallejo's high-pressure water and save ourselves whatever the cost of a two-and-a-half-million-gallon water tank is. So I do appreciate the idea that, that staff is talking about sitting down and negotiating with the City of Vallejo. I think there's some opportunities, but one of them would be the possibility of actually avoiding that tank altogether and just, uh, rely on Vallejo's water because it's there and it's pressurized. Just to comment.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, Councilmember Joseph, uh, section 10 of addendum number six, um, actually says both parties are going to get together and begin to discuss the, the 96 agreement. So, uh, it was an issue raised, uh, by, by the City of Vallejo and it's something that, that we embraced. It's a 25-year-old agreement nearly and, and a lot has changed in, in that time period on Vallejo's side. A lot has changed in our, uh, in our, as well. And so, you know, both parties are going to go into it and, and, you know, figure out when you have a willing seller and a willing buyer and, and you can figure out a situation where it makes, you know, sense and it's in the public interest for everyone. I think there's a lot of opportunity, um, you know, that we can come together and then work with our partners to the south.
It's very good. Any further comment from council? No? Any public comment received on this matter?
No public comment, Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment. For the discussion, desired action?
If there's no further comment, I'll make a motion, we adopt a Resolution 2020, next in order, authorizing, uh, the approval of addendum number six to the Vallejo Water Service Agreement, 2020-A111.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Larry is absent, Vice Mayor Oro.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. We'll move on now to management staff oral reports. They, um, fall 2020 creek cleaning.
Actually, because you're not at all sick of Rick, um, at this point, um, we're going to jump into his bonus time, extra credit. And, uh, he's got an update on some recent creek cleaning activities and I think he's got to show it.
Seen the out there, yes.
Yeah. Sorry. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Oh, yes, it's fine, yeah.
Great. Uh, so yes, I wanted to give a, uh, a quick update on creek cleaning and what's been happening the last couple of months. We have a, an agreement with the County of Napa Flood Control District. Um, I'm going to talk about that agreement and where it stands right now. Scope of services covered in there and, uh, some of the work that we have done this year. So, uh, like I said, we do have an agreement between the City of American Canyon and the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. It's agreement, uh, 2018-172. That agreement is in place and expires, uh, June 30th, 2021. Uh, it was put in place to minimize risk of damage to life and property from flooding. And, uh, it operates in compliance with all the regulating, um, permitting agencies. Um, it, it allows one agency to do that instead of the county pursuing permits and us pursuing, pursuing, uh, the same permit separately. So some of the activities that are covered in the agreement, um, as I mentioned, uh, the county is responsible for permitting, uh, biological monitoring, um, storm maintenance planning, uh, sediment, channel maintenance mitigation, and, um, coordination of the, of the volunteer, uh, stream enhancement events once a year. Uh, on the city side, what we're responsible for, uh, is mowing above the high-water mark on the banks and for watering any, uh, any plants, uh, that are in the vicinity, again, above the high-water mark of the creeks. So this, uh, agreement has been used to varying amounts, uh, over the last couple of years, but we did make a concentrated effort this year, uh, to reach out to the Flood Control District and to coordinate a couple of efforts. So this map shows, um, it's kind of a bird's eye view of the city and, uh, the areas that we were able to do cleanup this year. Uh, you can see down off American Canyon Road, um, we're able to. to clean that area of American Canyon Creek, and then the two areas on either side of Los Altos of Rio Del Mar, we were able to clean those up in there. The Rio Del Mar cleanup was extensive. That area had not been, vegetation had not probably been cleared out of that channel for, for almost 10 years. And so the results are pretty striking. You can see here, and I'm sorry, we couldn't catch this at the same time of day, get the same lighting, but you can see a very significant difference in the before and after pictures. In the before picture, we weren't actually sure there was a channel in there. And then again, here, you can see the difference. You know, we're leaving the trees in place, but removing all the other vegetation to allow storm flows to run out to the Napa River and, and not flood the neighborhoods. And so the project, I think, this year was very, very successful. And I, I want to thank the Napa County Flood Control District for, for working with us and, you know, working so hard. This, the cleanup of Rio Del Mar took them quite a while, and I appreciate their efforts. So thank you very much for your time. And the other thing I did want to make mention of during consent, you did approve the minute order on the mutual aid, and, and I did want to thank city staff from both streets and from, from water distribution, who helped out after the glass fire, was supporting both Napa County and, and the City of St. Helena. You know, it was voluntary, and people from American Canyon really stepped up and, and helped out our neighbors. And that is it for me tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you for your report. Now, that's, I wonder how much that obstructs the flow of the water going through there, and does it spill over in the street, you know, so the vegetation cleared out of the channel. But really approve, safety room, buddy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to add that I appreciate staff getting to these creeks, in particular, the Rio Del Mar Creek. I've met some people out there that actually have been kind of cleaning it, trying to, to clean it on their own, and, and it's been very difficult. So I'm sure they're even more appreciative. But, so thank you for getting to this, and now let's hope we get a lot of rains so that we can test it, see how it works.
Mark, is that the one that you and I, okay, I was trying to find it on Google Maps because I gave the address to Felix a while ago, and I was going to ask if that one got taken care of, because the resident was going through the fence and waiting it herself, and I don't think that was safe.
Probably not, but I do think it was covered, because, oh, yeah, so like I said, I'm glad it got addressed. I've been talked to by other people about the status, so thank you.
Okay, any further, city manager?
We also have Chief Ortiz has an update for us, as well as Creighton. Well, Chief Ortiz will go.
Good. Thank you, Jason. Real briefly, Mayor, council members of the public, as you know, there is election days a couple of weeks away. It's getting a lot of national attention, news-wise, as far as any kind of civil unrest, violent demonstrations, or anything like that. I know there's been some news about Chicago preparations. City of LA, we knew, we know in 2016, we saw some, some violence and some protests in the City of Oakland here in our region. So I just wanted to let council be aware that countywide, in Napa County, from Calistoga here to American Canyon, and all the law enforcement in between, we're monitoring our region, our county. We don't know or anticipate any problems, but we're, you know, we're, we're paying attention, and, and we're preparing for election night. We think it'll be a good democratic peaceful night, but we are paying attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And lastly, Creighton, Park and Drive Director Creighton Wright has a update for you as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm excited to share just a quick update on our October recreation offerings. I want to throw a shout out to our recreation team, putting together lots of great programs. It's resulted in us having to do some things a little bit different than we're used to. We don't normally do a whole lot in October or Halloween, and because we felt like the community really needed a break, we put significant effort into it. So I just want to go over and just give a oral update with what we have coming up here for the rest of the month of October. We call it the Spooktacular October is what we have it on our website with all of our offerings on it. So please spend some time and go to the city website. Our communications team has done a great job putting some information together that our team has created. First off, in this month of October, we had a partner event with the Arts Foundation where they did a pumpkin pickup that was actually last weekend, and.
You're breaking up.
Breaking up, Creighton.
Segue. All right, can you hear me now?
That's better.
All right. So we started off with a partnership with the Arts Foundation, and that segued into our pumpkin path, which is an activity at the wetlands where we ask people to paint pumpkins, and we place them along the, the, the length of the wetlands path. So that's already started with 20 or more pumpkins out there. So as you're walking around, get that, take a look at that, and just get a, the purpose of it is to get a sense of just community having to do with the pumpkins. It's kind of a play on pumpkin patch for us, the pumpkin path. Throughout the entire month of October, we're doing a Halloween costume contest, which is sponsored by Redwood Credit Union and American Canyon Orthodontics. We have five categories for folks to enter in. I saw over the weekend, last weekend on Facebook, that we had our first entries into that contest, with people dressing up and sending us pictures through Facebook. So that's great to see. We do have prizes for the winners, so I encourage all of our residents to take a look at the contest rules and get all dressed up in your costume and enter into the contest. Lastly, for the month of October, in the Halloween season, we have a drive-through trick-or-treat event on Friday, October 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Philip West Aquatic Center, where, where, where we have, are working with several of our partners, and we're going to have several stops along our trunk-or-treat street for kids to do a safe, COVID-safe trick-or-treating opportunity in cars, dressed in costumes, with no contacts. So it has been sanctioned by our county health department, thankfully. So that's the way we're going to end up and kick off our, our Halloween this year for the season. Our team's working on lots of great stuff for November as well, really community-oriented and focused activities like the, the food drive that I mentioned earlier. So that's it. I just wanted to bring the council's attention our Spooktacular October events that are coming up, and we'll be rolling into some community-oriented stuff in November. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Well, Spooktacular, it sounds exciting. Thank you.
Ahead, Mayor, thank you.
That's it?
Correct.
Okay, we'll move on to Mayor Council Committee Reports and future agenda items. See, Council Committee Reports, we have a report from Vice Mayor Oram. Anything further to add?
No, but I did provide links into the documents, so you can see the presentations.
Yes.
I will say, though, that I did attend something called placemaking and community branding that leverages your natural assets. I took that and missed out on Mr. Holly's presentation at the League of California Cities. It was a tough decision there, right? But I did go to that. I am speaking with the representative of, of the company that helped the cities of Santee and Chattanooga, Tennessee, sort of think about how they think about their city as, as, as a place. And Sante is, is of interest in particular because they are on the edge of San Diego, near the hillsides, just outside of town, and they have a lot of natural assets that they've been able to leverage and brand for more visitation and driving more dollars and visitors to the city. I encourage you guys to check that out, and I'll report back to the city manager, Brent Cooper, after I speak with, with that company. So some exciting stuff, honestly.
Oh, very good. Okay. Councilmember Abadamos, anything to report?
Don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I have a couple of items. First, on the pumpkin path, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the Kiwanis of American Canyon also cosponsored, and, and in particular, the Key Club was there. And I really have to give, we've always been saying how wonderful the Key Club is, and I just want to use the pumpkin path as yet one more example where we, I think we gave out over 120 pumpkins in less than an hour, and we, we could have given out more if we thought more. So it was a very successful event. Congratulations. I also wanted to talk about Back to the Table is back. November 12th at Lasso will be the first of hopefully several Back to the Table events in which we identify a restaurant, a local restaurant, and encourage people to either dine-in or take-out to kind of help promote our local restaurants and bring them back to, to a better level. So Lasso was going to be the first restaurant back in May before the, the second wave hit. So now it's back on, and that's Thursday, November 12th, right after Veterans Day. Beyond that, I attended the Chambers Government Affairs Committee, where we kind of, kind of did a debriefing on the council and mayor forums, and also attended the Climate Action Committee, where we endorsed the concept of creating a joint powers agreement between all the jurisdictions. And I think at our November 17th meeting, we'll be able to talk about it more detail. Councilmember Larry and I are working on some suggestions to update our climate action plan here locally. And I do have a future agenda item that I can either announce now or wait until that cycle comes up. Your choice.
We'll take care of that after we get to reporting. I just, mine was significantly the League of California Cities Conference had some actual material. I think they, one of the workshops that I was involved with in two, two areas of it, was the dealing with inclusion and equity in underrepresented groups. And I was reminded, the keynote speaker was talking similarly to a program I completed with, with, with the County Health and Human Services, our acronym was GEAR, Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which was rather comprehensive, involved a lot of jurisdictions within the area. But this was the presenter, this one was a very similar program, just given the amount of attention that's out there in communities right now, and the, the number of protests, and unfortunately, some of the, the dark side of that that happened as well, was something, a big issue that I think cities need to work on again, given the attention on the national scene in terms of how do we, how do we communicate with each other, how do we include each other, what does equitable mean to different groups in terms of their participation, their stake in, in what we all have. So I think that will continue forward, and I look forward to be more involved with that as well. And then on to oral agenda items, Councilmember Joseph.
Yes. First of all, I appreciated the fact that we had a Filipino Heritage Month proclamation. But we also need to look at the Latino Heritage Month, which actually was mid-September to mid-October, but better late than never. If we could agendize a proclamation for the next meeting in November, I'd appreciate it.
Very good. Well, a lot of us in the Latino community would certainly appreciate that. We are the largest immigrant community within all of Napa County, and a significant force in the economy. All right, well, thank you for your thought on it, Councilmember Joseph. Anything further for the greater good, future agenda items? We have concluded our business for the evening, council. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, good evening.
Good night.